Let's call the zoning commission regular meeting for December 6th to 24th. We have a new member, Diane Erickson. Thank you for all that.
It's Kevin Gray.
Hi, Kevin.
Kevin Gray, you may know Kevin Gray.
Nice to meet you.
And we have two alternates that are new, Diane Madigan and Shane Lindahl. You know them. Okay. And here's themselves to everybody else. No, thank you very much. One court of order on zoning commissions. Alternates may ask questions or weigh in on any public meeting, public hearing session. Unless you're appointed to replace a certain member, you can't participate in deliberations because the state has, which is legal, a court decision would say that only the elected officials can be given the side. So anyway, with that, we need to appoint an alternate from life. So Diane?
Okay.
You're at, so Madigan, anyway. So we have minutes of the last meeting. I didn't see the 79th special meeting in the, yeah. I had the November 18th minutes on the online, on the Dropbox site. And the 21st were there too. Did we approve the 21st?
We did. We did start to make that again. We don't know why the meeting minutes of the last meeting were not on. We can table that for the next meeting.
The special meeting? The special meeting was just a workshop meeting.
Yeah.
So there's no minutes because we didn't take any action. Okay. On the motion of the minutes of the 18th, motion to approve, I have a couple of comments. Just words, nothing on line 33. I'm appointing an alternate. I would delete, fully complimentary of the commission, just say no appropriate necessary. So on line 133, I would prefer we say, discussion ensued by the commission as we were sat by hospital and were too colloquial today. 162, we have the same wording issue. And that's it. Bruce, any comments?
No. If I recommend that we adopt that, it changes the.
Any other changes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, they're carried. On our public hearing, we're going to open a public hearing for application 1948.
So Caesar, together, you can hear the two applications together. This is just any actions after the hearing is closed, we need to separate for each application.
Okay. So since they're kind of twin applications, can you leave the call, Kevin?
For both. Application 1948 of Edward Corrigno, agent estate of Joanne Burke, owner for special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C, that eight of his subsidiary land rights relations to create a rear lot in a property located at 385 West Mountain Road, assess a map, A19 block five with a rear lot, 0025 zone R40. And application 1949 of Edward Corrigno, aided, all claimed, plus eight, owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C dot A, the subsidiary land relationship to create a rear lot in a property located at 389 West Mountain Road, assess its map, A19 block five with a rear lot, 0026, zone R40.
Great, okay.
Good evening. Just to reintroduce myself, I'm Tom Benke. I'm the attorney for the applicant Edward Corrigno. It's good to see you all again. Nice to see the new member. You were here at last meeting to take the informal discussion, we focused on this particular project, and you gave us positive recommendations for here to finalize our application. Mr. Dano is here, he did the math. And if you have any questions, it's pretty straightforward what we're doing here. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or you can answer them if you need help.
Okay, that is good. Can you explain one as well?
Sure. There's two properties here that are contiguous. One is a non-conforming lot, because they have adequate frontage for that neighborhood. And the other one has more than adequate frontage, so we're going to take some of the frontage from the conforming lot, keeping it still performing, add to the non-conforming lot, taking care of one of your principal goals on the zoning commission, which is to eliminate non-conforming lots. And each property will have a rear lot, serviced by its own driveway, positive review of the apartment's health, well-inseptic, and if no weapons on the property, it'll be in the weapons report as part of the application.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Commission first.
No, I have no questions. I did drive by the other day, just to check out where it was. I've visually seen it anywhere to the right.
This is basically two lots, each of which is large enough to have a rear lot.
Yes.
And the only complication is the frontage has got to be adjusted for one of the lots to the other. They're adjacent to each other, and we would end up with four building sites.
That's right. The positives is, is you're going to take a non-conforming lot off your walls, and this is in keeping with the neighborhood, because the whole neighborhood is basically houses with rear lots behind them, so it's like eleven in this neighborhood. So it's in keeping with the catch of the neighborhood. And it's a living for the town, non-conforming lot comes off, towards expertise.
Okay. Can you shoot?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First of all is, you know, the application was submitted under Article 7, Section C, and the reference to in that section, there is an ABC under that. And Section C provides that access to rear lots to be used. And I see that on the northern lot, three and five, there's a lot of access to the existing lot, shaping up a new lot to provide access to original owners of the parcel. I'm interested in what you're thinking about this, because it seems to me it could be more interesting. Would you like to see?
Yeah, I can take a look at that right here. I'll take both questions.
Now, so that we want, if that's a special, right, I'm not sure that it's not a subdivision or anything.
Well, I gather is because, my guess is, if you're putting the map together, that the common ownership of the one lot is already a given, whereas, so on the nod that doesn't show easement, that was going to be remaining common ownership of the existing owner, you don't have a nod. But Mr. Dano, you have to answer for that?
Ryan Dano from Dano Land Survey. The regulation does say we can access it with a 20-foot easement, but we have a potential buyer for that rear lot that we prefer to own.
I mean, if it's man's or we're, we can easily put that in there. I mean, as a lawyer representing people who buy properties all the time, if you can have your own title to something or an easement, you're always going to ask for your own title. But if that's a condition of approval, we'll do it by easement. Correct. Well, I've been on the commission most of the last year. I've never said I'm on the commission. I assume the planning commission is, as I said, some way of coming around this one thing. I'm not familiar with the regulations, so I'm reading, and I'm looking for compliance with the regulations. And you have an offer that's substantial, that's reasonable, I think, my own opinion is you want to follow the regulations.
What is it?
It'll be fine.
But I have a preparation when you're a land use agency, you characterize what's going on. If you look at this one, the first application, is that a subdivision or is that a re-subdivision?
I would say it's neither. I would say it's pursuant to your regulations, where you can use this process to get a rear lot, which is a special exception, so it's neither.
Again, the state statute requires a subdivision and re-subdivision of the main of the planning commission. And our own regulations, so I'm surprised to see this matter is not the system.
Yeah, this took him up last, listen, kind of last.
Bruce.
It wasn't the question that you came to us, Mike. So I think the conversation we had, the only different issue today is a focus. But this, there was no conversation about the slogan of the commission, the requirement of similar access from the parcels, that wasn't discussed. So there is today, I'll bring that up when we deliver it in public hearings.
Okay, it's hard for me to hear what you're saying, and I think we don't have microphones here, so it's a little more difficult. But one thing, I believe according to our zoning regulations, we can establish rear lots without integrating subdivision trusts. So I think you're bringing up something that doesn't have.
I'm appalled to see that if you can find it in the regulation, that might be a loophole or something. I don't know if it exists.
I believe.
Well, it says it, it says it per sentence, the zoning commission may grant a special exception to allow the rear portion of a lot of record, if they happen, I mean, they can. That's why we're here, that's why we went to the town.
And further down, is this subdivision or re-subdivision?
I don't think a single one of these, if Mr. Blinckley can let me know, has gone for a subdivision or re-subdivision approval process, but I think it's still in this process.
Can't do this, Commissioner.
But wasn't this last?
It's fine, it should be.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. The other question was whether or not a dedicated strip of land versus an easement?
We're getting to solve that with an easement, so on a condition of approval.
It seems to me that. That's a, if there's a dedicated piece of land that goes to the back, that's better than an easement, I don't understand why we're consuming ourselves.
Well, I don't know who wrote the regulations, Dave, but.
That's why we're here, is to apply what kind of sense the situations.
Homer's always going to want his own property if he can. If you want to insist on an easement, do an easement, but it doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense, but I can read too, and it says shall, it doesn't say can be, it doesn't say alternatively, it says shall. But I do, your point is extremely well taken, which is, you know, we're being hyper-technical to detriment of what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, it does because it assumes it's a rear lot, which doesn't have frontage, and you're making it a rear lot that has frontage.
Any other? Uh-huh. Any other questions? Before we open up the clock? Kevin?
I don't know if we can get some clarification. Because it does say that. I think we need to discuss that one, whether, I think it does make more sense to do it by ownership than by easement.
Now, is it true that we don't have the heart test?
So I got an email this afternoon from the Health District. They were out of sight. They actually, direct quote, she had an issue with grant approval, they ran into real sandy soils, and Brian can speak to that, he was here. But it's attached to my staff report, the emails from Kristen Cool as she sent through the 113 this afternoon. Hi Mike, a quick review of two lots submitted by Brian Dano, Land Surveyor. It does not appear that, it does appear the lots are capable of supporting septic systems and well, Kristen. So you have to give an okay from the Health District, Thomas, for these two lots.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner, Tom? Okay, let's open the light to the public, if anyone in the public here to speak to this application. I think there's everybody else's interest otherwise.
I have it first.
Okay. Are we ready to close the public hearing? Any reason we shouldn't, Mike?
If you're going to mess with that, it's all, it's all happened.
We closed the public hearing on application 1948, uh, 1948, 1949.
Thank you.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Both, okay, carries six nothing, we close the public hearing. Okay, now we can consider these applications. Mike says we should do them one at a time. So, application 1948, that's, that's the northern one, 385 West Mountain Road. Is that the one that we have?
Is it the staff report here somewhere, Mike? You do. You do. With the issue of the easement, I guess the commission should determine whether it may require an easement to serve the rear lot versus fee and loop, basically, fee's simple ownership of the parcel. Is Kevin Burke, your point about how you read, talked about creating a lot without frontage along the public road, and creating a rear lot now with frontage? And the applicant kind of said to you that if the commission wants to require an easement, they were amenable to, say, an easement to serve this property in public care.
Okay. And given that their objective here is to eliminate non-conformity, we should accept their offer to make it.
An easement will eliminate non-conformity.
Okay. Any other comments?
Oh, I just.
I just wanted to be sure of where it's clear, that we're accepting the modification of the plan to show an easement for access to the rear lot to the front of 385 West Mountain Road. That's a change that we should have expected. Our regulation says access to the rear lot shall be provided, shall be provided by easement. And so we see drugs from that, but you know, we shouldn't see on one an easement, on the other one, as the home's sort of plan.
Correct.
I'm all in favor of accepting the modification and putting that in this condition, but I'm not settled with whether we have to report it as only bad on this. And I agree for you, unless others have the regulations in place, or requirements. This is Article 7, C8, and says, no, if the division by special permit meets the definition of the subdivision or re-subdivision, under Connecticut law, it must be processed by the planning commission. It must be processed by the planning commission.
But there's a language difference here. Special permit is different from a special exception.
Well, maybe that's a little bit suspicious. It's the same thing. Special permit and special exception is the same, they're kin. The real, the key is though, the planning commission cannot create a lot that doesn't meet zoning. So even if this is considered a subdivision or re-subdivision, they need their special exception from this commission in order to file with the planning commission. Because the planning commission can't create a lot that doesn't meet the frontage requirement. So in the case, if this was considered a re-subdivision or subdivision, they still have to come to this commission first and have the special exception in here. But in this case, this is, you allow the creation of rear lots by a special exception.
Okay, that's been done without the planning.
Correct. Because those have been determined as cuts that weren't, they either were first cuts. So under Connecticut law, if you have a lot that pre-exists your subdivision regulations, everyone is entitled to split it into two. In this case, if you split it into two and you create a lot that doesn't have frontage along the public street, that doesn't meet the frontage requirement, in this case R40 to be 200 feet of frontage, the avenue to create that division, to legalize that split, that free split, would be the special exception. But in the case, let's say you had a lot that was split off from a larger lot, and now you wanted to create a rear lot, you still need to have that special exception to establish it, because you'd be creating a lot that doesn't meet the zoning regulations, because you don't have a frontage. So it's kind of semantic, it's still, they should be here.
So if we agree with this, we can go ahead and make a motion.
So actually, I want to, so if it would qualify as a subdivision because it was legally as a subdivision, then it would have to go to a different plan? I think it's what Matt could say. This doesn't qualify as a true subdivision, because there is not enough frontage, so therefore it doesn't go in plan.
Well, what that writes, I think, saying is, speaking more, like, let's say you had a division of land that was the third or second cut off of another parcel, you still, the granting the special section wouldn't say, hey, you got a subdivision, you're safe. You would get the ability to create the lot as a rear lot, because it's a specially permitted use technically in all the residential, or some of the residential zones, not all. You can't do it in the smaller zoning districts like we are that do this. Does that make sense, Kevin? I'm sorry.
No. Does it meet the definition of a subdivision or not?
This one does not.
It does. Well, does it? It does. Because if it meets this definition of a subdivision, then it has to be processed by.
But it's, because of the state statute, such a division of the parcel.
But that's off of one parcel, three or more, not off of two.
We're only two parcels.
So it gets back to you have the right to divide your parcel into two.
It's just a rear lot, so it's not a subdivision.
Well, again, it's a matter of, you can look at this in a variety of ways, but here's one, here's two, and the sole parcel's. So that's good. Number 385.
No, three goes the other way.
Yes, correct.
So it's not part of that.
That's one, two, and land sold.
No, actually, the land, there's actually a court case of the land sold, that's strictly not considered a subdivision, sell something to someone to make their lot enlarge. It's only considered a subdivision if that was sold off building purposes. The additional frontage would not be considered out of common.
Okay.
I know, it's, plain read in statute, I agree with the first, but the specifics of it, no, this does not fall.
Okay. We'll read the motion.
So we're going to make the motion that.
Who's that?
By easement.
Yes. The approved application 1948 is submitted with the, there's a change that the access to the rear, rear lot would be by easement.
And I'll second that.
Did you get that, Jim?
Yes, I got that, thank you.
Okay, now we can discuss, if any further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Bruce?
No.
Okay. Five to one.
I'm in favor of the concept. I wish the law would recommend this.
Okay. Let's consider the second. And the second, Bruce, do you have a question on that? Other than we shouldn't do it at all?
No, that one's, once it buys the land, it's able, and it's just kind of one lot. So the question of many instances is.
Okay.
I'm moving forward to move the proposal of application 1949, that's the one.
Second, you're right. Tom? Questions?
Can I add to it?
Sure.
The special exception is subject to the following conditions. Applicant should provide two copies of my law's plans for seclusion by the chairman. One currently filed with the city of town, the second currently filed with the engineering department. It should actually apply to the management as well.
We can do that, so.
It's the same, the same amount.
Okay, all right.
That we, we're supposed to, we're supposed to.
Okay. And you agree with that modification, second?
Yes, I do.
Okay. You guys agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed or not?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Five to one, it passes. Okay. We have a new application, Mr. John Hugh, who strikes down the previously approved plan to remove the affordable housing restriction on a property located at one evening house. Mr. Madigan?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, I'm TJ Donahue, and I'm here tonight representing the estate of Mrs. Burke. I'm here with her daughter, the executive director of the estate, Sue Leeson. The bidder leads are here as the willing and motivated buyers to buy the property, which is before you for consideration. When the power force was established and originally created, 14 units were designated to be workforce housing, somewhat like affordable housing. And the thought was that they would put market rate of the collar on the houses and an actual formula collar on the houses. The houses are market rated affordable because those 14 houses were of smaller size, and it was established that the price of the houses at the time they were sold eventually were at or about the per square foot house cost of the other houses. So these are smaller houses within a larger neighborhood to achieve the goal of some affordability in similar to the house where there was significant depreciation of the value at the time. The 14 restrictions went on, they were never really effective. Anyone who's done math on it shows that the collars were too high to really establish any real affordability, and that market rates, even the subject contract today is well below the collar value, which would be imposed. So we have the bidder leads who've lived in town for, I don't know, I play chamber commerce, soft boat, build, college, so, and they stand, trying to purchase this house from the leases, from the estate. And what's before you tonight is a request by you to consider removal of the collar or the restriction, which is in the land records and applies to 14 houses. Now, the affordability has been waived by the town in numerous occasions. When the power force got to a point of success, and then a little bit of a slowness, these land use agencies reconfigured and restructured the nature of the subdivision, and created the Carson Way subdivision with new, the entrance on the Stratford Road, a new design of the houses, a new pattern of the layout of the houses. And at that time, it was understood by the community that. And at that time, it was understood by the community that there were seven affordability covenants, which were imposed on the ground of those houses. And after much work, I was not a part of it, but I read it and followed it, they made a decision that the Carson Way should go forward with the new designed house because of its desirability for the community and its compatibility with the existing community. And that they would allow the purchase of, the buyout of the rights of the collar for $7,000 a unit, and that was done. At that time, the configuration of the houses was changed, the style of the houses was changed, the 55 over restriction was removed, and these affordability restrictions were bought out of those units. At that time, seven units remained, and one of those has been bought out, I don't have the detail with you tonight, for a payment of $7,000. We have an understanding with the town council and with the town manager that if this board sees fit, we would be able to buy out the covenant on this property for a payment of $7,000 to the town fund, which provides for social service needs. And we stand ready for the table to do that. Why do we seek this? We seek this because as a caller, it's ineffective. We did attach with our application, a calculation was prepared to show that the caller would never affect this price or this contract price, and it's not even within $20,000 of it, it's likely it would never affect it. More importantly, we're here because, and I'm going to have attorney Murphy talk to you for a moment, but the buyer has had some problems with their lender and with the lending environment with respect to a caller like that. And John, do you have more?
I am John Murphy, I'm an attorney with the camera of this girl, the mean heart, but more importantly, I represent the bidder lease, who are my in-laws. They're sitting right behind me, they're, they've been here for 56 years, and they'd like to stay in town, and they found a perfect unit for them. Unfortunately, as we looked at the title search, there's a deed restriction in the deed that refers to this, not only restriction on the sale price hypothetically, because the, it's hypothetically because the numbers probably would never impose that restriction. And it also refers to a right of first refusal for in favor of the town to purchase the unit at this price determined in the index, again hypothetical, starting, I think, in 2029, just that far away. But that restriction in and of itself raised some red flags for the lawyers, the title companies, and now the bank. It's essentially unfinancable at this point. Banks do not, lenders do not like or deal well with rights of first refusal or restrictions on the sale price. That's the problem, the practical problem that we're facing. Again, I think it's a hypothetical problem, but it doesn't matter. Banks don't deal well with either of those, the restrictions or the right of first refusal, hypothetical or not. As a practical matter as well, because these price restrictions are never, we don't think will ever kick in unless perhaps Google decides to move into Simsbury. The town's going to generate more revenue for affordable housing, but with the $7,000 fee than it ever would with the restrictions. And I don't see the town ever exercising a right of first refusal to purchase the property, even if they could, I'm not sure they have the authority, but that's, again, that's hypothetical as well. So we're looking for some relief, but understand that the selectman, or the executive, the town town manager, has the authority to give the release subject only to the approval of this commission. And we also understand, as TJ mentioned, that this commission has almost approved several of units, so we're looking for that consistent policy approval and closing hopefully on that scale. So.
Okay, so basically, we're being asked, and there's something that's not effective that is impeding actual sale of the unit. I think the situation appears that the, to me, that the, yeah. I actually was on the condition at the time that was started, but the implementation of the collar was it was, you couldn't sell anything, you couldn't have a sale price that was greater than the initial price plus the consumer price index, it was actually a housing index, which now, according to these numbers, it's, that's way above the market price at this point. So anybody have any questions? That was confusing to me at first.
I thought that the correspondence, the client, it's helping to me. I would say this, though, I was interested in the proposed buyout of the discretion. You identified December 12, 2012, as the sign more select, adopted conditions for removal. And I looked at the minutes, there's no meeting on December 12, December 10. This topic wasn't there.
I couldn't find it.
I think it was 2002.
Oh.
I think, that's just a relic from my conversation.
There was, Bruce, there was a, they did it on the 10th of December, 2012. And in the, in the, all it says is that the selectmen agree to authorize the first selectmen to negotiate the settlement, to remove that restriction.
I didn't.
I couldn't find them, I couldn't find them.
But that was related, sorry, that was related to the 2011 application that went to this commission with Carson Way. So that, yeah, that action was specific to Carson Way.
Yeah, we remove, we can remove the restriction, but the contract between the town and the promoter, or the developer, was a deal with the town, which the selectmen have the only authority to negotiate. So once we, if we were to get permission to remove it, then they still have to negotiate with the town, and it appears that $7,000 is the price.
Don't worry. Did you say that the original 14 units that we had, the specific restrictions, and that seven buyout, seven grandage, Carson Way, net deals?
The developer bought the seven rights out for one pay.
Oh.
They bought up, not individual.
Okay, but it got resolved at $7,000.
Yes.
I believe there's one, at least one unit referenced in that correspondence. That's also a seven dollar unit in the Powder Forest.
And the intervening years. Okay, that wasn't necessarily reasonable.
Yeah. I think.
Well, I think, you know, the numbers reason, and the notion of getting a leave here is reasonable, so I'm just, I'm not attached yet to how it gets to be, this only commission has the authority to do this.
Because the old, because the restriction was.
And then it has to be endorsed by the board.
No, the town, yes, the town, corporate authority will have to, you can't convey, but we're here tonight for a site plan amendment, because the only thing that empowered the restriction in the first place was the condition of a site. And that's why it needs to be cycling, and we're going to cycle it, just as it specifically impacts this specific.
As part of the site plan approval, the applicant in 2004, the three, agreed to these conditions with the town, and with the town, with the selectmen. So the contract to the affordable control was with the selectmen, and it was a condition of a site plan approval. So we have to remove the site plan approval restriction, and then the town, or selectmen can, they take up $7,000 and release it. I spent all day trying to figure this out.
Well, I guess, there will have to be a further discussion between endorse and remove the application, and then force them for some reason. Where, by Wednesday?
My instruction, my communication from town council is that they do not want to afford without this action of the site.
Is there a motion? To approve the request, ask if your questions, Mike, you're there.
I've been unseen, though, which is just one of me. I'll be an alternate for a night.
Well, I don't have any questions. I mean, my questions would be how this ever happened, and like, it seems like such a convoluted process, but I mean, the precedent seems to have been set at this point.
It was straightforward at the time.
Yeah? Okay, but yeah, no, so no questions at the moment.
Yeah, it was an attempt to try to make affordable housing without the constraints of the state statute, which would have been 30 years, and income constraints on buyers, and that wasn't deemed to be appropriate at that time.
Now, are you sure the covenants are 30 years, this was 25?
This was 20.
20.
20.
I think that the right of first refusal goes for 99 years, beginning in 2021.
I don't think we want to know that.
But the seller, as well as that provision, all of those provisions already solved, the company could find it's the situation, get that.
Questions will have to be each, they're resolved.
Can I get this request again?
Unless the board selects.
Yeah. But since the constraint is seemingly sensible at this point. We're getting $7,000 over the market, so people should come here crying about the $7,000. Anyways, can we?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I approve that we approved application 1951.
Second, by Dana, she's really good tonight. Any further questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry six, nothing.
Thank you, Victor Finlay, happy here.
Not often will we be there, we want to tell us. Okay, we have, what else can we present here? Okay. Mike, do you have any correspondence and regulations up?
I've got 1951.
1951, there's one application left.
Oh.
Sorry, something.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. This is the one where it pictures on. Sorry, TJ. 1915.
That was it?
Go ahead.
Members of the commission, we're here tonight with this Silverman group, we're building the Ridge at Top Park with a request for a site plan amendment, and I've got slides in the back, and I don't know if you want to move them or whatever, but okay. First of all, I got Dan Lacy here, who's the executive vice president of construction for Silverman Group, Hoover R. Seedy, who's the project manager to the tradesman, Sabas Loewicki, who's from BHB, and our site plan is simply a, well. Dan Lacy, we disapplication, they're very pleased to be at Simsbury, they have completed 78 units, 48 are occupied, they remain in full construction mode and wish to refine the development for market conditions and to balance the Ridge community. They seek modification of the site plan to reduce the number of townhomes and to substitute a residential structure, which will provide a greater number of one-bedroom units. Therefore, they present this site plan amendment to change three and a quarter townhome units for a single 32 to 36 unit apartment building, which will also increase the number of one-bedroom units. The structure will have identical elevations to the building which now exists facing Almeida Street in the center of the site. Our research tells us that people come to the Ridge at Simsbury for a single floor living with elevators as opposed to walk-up spaces at three levels. And that's not all people, but that is a higher percentage of folks coming that we thought. The architects and engineers have designed the layout modifications to preserve all aspects of the walkable TND neighborhood. They will replicate all the design features of the existing built structure, the landscape, the landscaped elements. The water pollution control authority, Togniaza, has reviewed the proposed site plan and assured us that while there were additional charges, there were just more capacity. So this is the office, if you haven't been to the Ridge, this is the sales office there with the map, it's the clubhouse. There's a view from the street, that's one of the two commercial buildings, we report to you tonight that we have a prospect for that building, and we also, that Dan Lacy's going to be pulling permits to the other 8,000 square foot building within several months. Commercial building. This is a layout of our plan. This is the, this is the change that we're making, this building and this building. And that change, as you can see right now, those are three townhome structures and a five townhome structure here, we're going to eliminate one of the, one of the townhomes here to make that a four, and then we're going to displace these buildings with this building, which is a 32 unit building, it's, the building that you see directly to the left of the entry drive, it's, it's fully built and occupied. And there it is with the, this slide is designed to show the outline of the three townhome structures, so there's one, two, three. Because this is a TND neighborhood, in urban design, you have to occupy all the sidewalk space, you can't create gaps in it, and that's why it's such a good fit to have the 32 unit structure. That's what it will look like. This is the one that has lost one townhome unit on the end, and here's the new structure. That was the elevation that we promised you when we built this thing, when we started the work journey, and that's the built structure. It's not the same view, but I think you can see that we paid pretty good attention, they have paid pretty good attention to the detail. So that's the 32, 32 unit structure, and that's what we intend to replicate in the rear of the site. These are the rear elevations of the building, and these were done for designer view, but they show, that's the end of the unit as built, you can see how fairly that compares. And there's the rear of the site, which shows the garage units under, and that's also built totally consistently, look better than the renderings, which is a change, and that's the other end. There's a view of the building on the left, as you are in the courtyard looking towards the mountain and clubhouse. These are the townhome elevations, and that's what's being displaced, this is here just to show you what's displaced by that. And that is the, that's just a view through the site toward where we're going. Again, what we're asking for is a site plan amendment. The site plan amendment is simply to substitute the new structure for the three and one-quarter townhome structures that were removed. And I've got the full team here for any questions that you may have.
I have a question I'll start with, unless you want to start. I just want to be sure I got this, the 32 unit structure to be introduced here is a mirror image of the 444 on the other.
This will make you.
The same size, no differences here, same height, same size.
Exactly. The interior configuration may be changed to have more one-bedroom units and less.
Well, of the 32 units, are they all one-bedroom, or is there?
No.
Do we have to break down on that?
So that's 10, 10 to 10 one-bedroom, the 32 as designed, and the balance areas.
10 ones, 22 units, what are we giving up? This is 13 townhouses.
13 two-bedroom. 13 two-bedroom townhouses.
So bottom line, if that modified, would the option be safe? In other words, so are we increasing on?
Yes. Increasing by 23 units?
I'm pretty sure.
So that would have an impact on the school district, on Latimer potentially?
The school numbers are... Do we have any recent school numbers on the census?
Not for your development, I have it for the others. There's only... So excluding this development, there's seven hundred and sixty-six residential units approved. And you have one hundred and fourteen kids that are enrolled through various developments. And it comes out to point one-four kids per unit of the seven hundred and sixty-six that were approved.
Point one-four.
And that's excluding this development? Is that just as enrollment numbers from October one, from the Board of Education?
Latimer has had a significant increase.
I think the change... I think the change of one-bedroom units, Commissioner, would be... Would take pressure off.
That would kind of piggyback on what you're saying.
Well, I went to that school meeting. Did you go to the school meeting?
Yes, I did.
So I mean, that's... I don't think six kids is going to make all the difference in the world, but that's obviously a big concern right now.
Because they're already...
Yeah, they're already bursting.
You're going from fifty... From twenty-six bedrooms to fifty-four bedrooms. So you're doubling the number of bedrooms.
Wow.
You're adding seven two-bedrooms and sixteen one-bedrooms.
Yes, that's thirty.
So you're really adding two, seven units where there's two bedrooms, where there could be kids.
Correct.
In school.
Do you have the site plan as a slide?
Shannon, you shouldn't be a part of this discussion.
Oh, I can't.
It's not a problem here.
Okay, okay, okay. Sorry. It's not hurting you? I can't. It's out myself. It just comes out.
I understand. I don't want to get in trouble.
No, no, sorry. I have another question.
Yes.
And again, forgive my ignorance, but is there... Are there parking spaces lost in this?
We're losing twenty-three spaces, but those spaces were specific to the townhome units. So it was garages and tandem spaces. As far as surface shared residential, you're not losing any spaces. So your ratio is going to go down, but for those townhome units, they each had, let's say, the double garages had four spaces for that one unit. So you're really only losing unit-specific parking, not as far as the stacked flats where you're sharing through the whole building.
So an apartment would only anticipate having two spaces, is what you're saying, as opposed to a townhome that would anticipate having four?
It had four that they could strictly only use themselves. So we only got rid of the strict townhome spaces. As far as additional surface spaces, none of that has changed.
I'm just wondering which building were there?
So maybe I haven't...
Found the bottom? Yeah, yeah, there you go.
And this is one left. That's a five that becomes four.
Right. Which one's built?
This one is built.
The bottom one?
That one was built, and we're going to do that up there.
And the reason it has more... The new one has more units is because there's more one-bedrooms? Or is it bigger?
It's the same size.
Exterally looks the same.
It's the same footprint as the thirty-two. What we'd like to do is generate more one-bedrooms in the same footprint.
So that's why the thirty-six?
That's why the thirty-six increased.
But it looks the same.
It looks the same footprint, same exterior.
So you put your marker on the new building here?
Here it is. Right, right, right here.
It's what you're marking, right?
In that quadrant. So that took the place of three townhomes.
So you're marking right now this structure?
Yes.
It's not a rich town.
Correct.
And what's the reason? One stories?
Right. One stories. Our marker research showed that the one-bedroom apartments are more desirable than the two-bedroom, three-story.
Townhomes aren't selling well.
How much higher is that than townhomes?
They should be the same height. Because they're both three stories, three and a half, so I think, I believe it's fifty feet. They're not... The building will not be any higher than the townhomes.
There are findings that single-floor living with elevators desired by more Democrat than the three-floor apartment.
Though we've seen, I think the townhouses are over by the...
G O N P.
No, no, the ones over here.
No, no, no.
Those took a long time to sell. The townhouses, the apartments themselves were filled up. I think they still have one townhouse that isn't sold on that stretch. So what they're recognizing is the market isn't...
Are the townhouses owned or are they condos or are they purpose?
Everything here is rental.
That's different. Sounds like an economic sort of decision that they're making.
Was there any chance of making more of them one-bedroom instead of two-bedrooms? Just to cut down on the number of additional bedrooms.
Well, yeah. I just know there's a big overcrowding issue up at that end of town.
You know, one thing you know about this developer is that it's a family, and they want to hold this for three generations, and they make very careful decisions. And I think they're pleased with the mix that we imposed, you know, that they're working on.
There's a lot of confusion too about that. How the Board of Ed is going to solve the problem of imbalance among the schools. We can't solve that problem here by changing apartments, I don't think.
Well, but one part of the equation is the tremendous amount of taxes that these facilities are paying the town right now. It was... The town participated in this design to fill the gap of the loss of Hartford. This ring is a running head start in that. So that is part of it.
Yes, and there's more benefit to one-bedroom apartments than there is to two-bedroom apartments.
Studios are better. They have to make the decision. Make an economic, you know...
Well, just what the demand is.
Yeah, they've got to respond to the demand, and we have to rely on them to do that.
I'm just curious, how long have the... How long has this been for sale in general? Do you know what I mean? I should know. I drive by it all the time. But how long has this been built in existence?
COs were more... Built March, March.
March. Okay, so it's less than a year. Okay.
I guess I would just say that I find interesting, and I don't know what your research, what you've done with your research, but the different assisted livings in the area, both in this town and in neighboring towns, are all putting up new complexes. And they're all putting in two bedrooms and two bedrooms and a den. So I'm just wondering why you feel that there is more of a call for the one-bedrooms.
May I respond to your assisted living?
Sure, please.
This bill...
Or independent, not just assisted, but independent.
But assisted, independent living, this is the Alphany Site, which is independently owned by C A Ventures. It has one hundred and ten units. It's fully COed. Frankly, it looks like a Four Seasons Hotel if you go in it. And it's responsive to certain of those among us and have the type of size designs of individual units within it. This is just the... The rest of the site is apartment buildings, but that's responsive to the need you talk about and the size of what you're talking about.
Okay. Because I was thinking not just assisted living, but rather people who are choosing independently at a McLean or at a Seaberry or a Gunnast or something like that.
This is one of those facilities as well. And of course, our units are the same, too. You know, they tell me that this facility here, one of the primary groups that they find common there are our grandparents who have kids, who have grandchildren and such. I think they're seventeen or twenty filled, and they're just recently COed.
Questions? More questions? Going, going, going.
Awesome.
Kevin, do you have a question?
On this one, one point of the resolution needs to be clear about the units. The thirty-two reference to clarify one versus two bedrooms.
The commission is concerned you could condition it on the number of bedrooms asked for something by the Alphany Site. If you were concerned with that.
All right, okay.
Just make sure...
The assistant member, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I approve the application nineteen fifty-one. TJ, down to the location. Nelson's very LLC. Order for a site plan amendment to switch out thirteen townhouse units for thirty-two stacked flats. The presidential units are properly located at two-part Almeida Streets. The proposal of the site plan amendment is subject to the following conditions of the proposal. Administrative zoning permits required for construction. Two, the commission authorizes staff to approve minor changes to the plans such as landscaping etc. Said changes are being made in writing to staff.
But it's not thirty-six?
Up to thirty-six, we'd like to fit the ones in.
That's one.
If that's...
That's just...
Thirty-two is the correct...
Thirty-two is what they apply for.
Thirty-six is on the site.
You can only approve what they apply for is thirty-two. Your actual application is thirty-two.
Okay, wait a second. Second one.
Did somebody second our idea?
Yep, down here. Okay, further discussion. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Okay. You can clap for one. Okay. So it passes. Thank you very much. Note that... Note that the opponent's in the discussion. The one that voted no. Put it down.
Thank you all through.
Thank you.
Hold tight.
No, because the one that votes no can then have reconsideration, make a reconsideration request at a subsequent next meeting. So you have to know who it was. Anyway. Mike?
Correspondents? Jonathan, Paul, from the last meeting. The special meeting when we were discussing home occupations. I took a look at all the surrounding towns and how they're regulating home occupations. Also in the Dropbox, there are provisions in the home occupation language in the proposed regs. This wasn't in your Dropbox, it's just a... Sorry. And Mike's giving me a look.
You got the stink eye. You're darn right.
I caught it from across the room. But I wanted to pull the... This is probably a follow-up on our conversation, kind of what's everyone else doing? Is anyone like calling out stuff that's not customer areas, home occupation? Are there common themes, how it's regulated? And you can take a look at what everyone's doing. A lot of people are doing a tier approach, a minor versus major. The separating factor is whether they're doing it as a right or requiring a simple zoning permit. That's really one of the two things. You take a look at the town of Farmington, they have an interesting reg on the first page for the two different types of tiers of approval. But I have on the list Farmington, Avon, Canton. And I was on the phone with the planner in Grandy. I didn't have her stuff in here, but hers... Their regs are very permissive for home occupations. However, they allow avenues for other uses at homes, such as landscaping business. They don't treat it as a home occupation. They require, that's especially permitted use in residential zoning districts. So it's just food for thought, maybe, is if the commission felt in some condition it was appropriate to have those uses, you may be able to do that as a... Regulate it as a separate special exception, independent of the home occupations. But I just caution you, because as we know, once you approve a home, a special exception, it runs with the land symbol of variance. So if you do go down to regulate those uses by the permitting process, it's run that risk that it's permanent.
So what is our course here?
I almost have to push and take a look at the other regs in the other communities. I have that graph based on our discussion at the workshop, and let's maybe try to find the middle ground between what everyone else is doing versus some of the concerns that we had. Because I think some of these regs, there's some points in here that would be great to incorporate in our regs that may simplify the process. The other thing is just landing on what is considered a customer and home occupation and what is not. Like I gave the examples of the logging business. Is that or the landscape? Are those considered customer and home occupations? Because those are the questions I get here in my office, which then, as we know from previous applications, come before this commission under the current regulations. So in the new regs, you know, we kind of look at some of those issues and say, we can maybe say that those are not considered customer and home occupations. Or the characteristics of those uses are not considered home occupations.
For you people that are new, one of the things here is that we probably make the numbers up. We probably have eight hundred thousand people who work at home in various states in town. And the vast majority of those should be as of right. There shouldn't be any, you just do it, and you don't need any permission. And we started trying to find the things that needed to be controlled, and it's basically annoying the neighbors. You get noise, odors, those kinds of things. And then you get into equipment. If you're a landscaper, suddenly that means you've got big equipment, and most of the neighbors don't like those kinds of things. And so this is where Mike was seeing, well, maybe we should have a list of prohibited things or things that you can only do by in some of their zone. The other thing is you have some other artists in town who have large accessory, accessory buildings and things that we somehow or other all kind of like. But in a form-based world, we'd have trouble trying to figure out how you permit those as of right. So we're struggling with those things, and that's why we're looking at what other neighboring towns did. And we probably should schedule another workshop early in January, unless people are going to be here at Christmas, to spend an hour, an hour and a half, and having read all those things, try to decide what really should be in our regs. And that's kind of the last big component that we have to put together. Thomas, are there questions?
Between the landscaper and the hairdresser or whatever.
Yeah, hairdresser. We have approved hairdresser as a special exception.
Yeah, I know.
And we started trying to find the things that needed to be controlled. And it's basically annoying the neighbors. You get noise, odors, those kinds of things. And then you get into equipment. If you're a landscaper, suddenly that means you've got big equipment. And most of the neighbors don't like those kinds of things. And so this is where Mike was seeing, well, maybe we should have a list of prohibited things or things that you can only do by in some of their zone. The other thing is you have some other artists in town who have large accessory buildings and things that we somehow or other all kind of like. But in a form-based world, we'd have trouble trying to figure out how you permit those as of right. So we're struggling with those things. And that's why we're looking at what other neighboring towns did. And we probably should schedule another workshop early in January, unless people are going to be here at Christmas, to spend an hour, an hour and a half, and having read all those things, try to decide what really should be in our regs. And that's kind of the last big component that we have to put together. Thomas, are questions?
It's a bit of a talk, you know, between the landscaper and the hairdresser or whatever.
Yeah, hairdresser. We have approved hairdresser as a special exception in one case.
Hairdresser? I was going to say, I live in Jericho. We have them all, trust me. We have good ones and we have the bad ones. So I definitely think there should be some regulations on it.
And there is, there is in one of the towns, one seat of hairdressing is of right. But if you went beyond that, you couldn't. So in our regs, we get the person who had one had to get a special exception. But now that goes with the property. So they can sell that property if the hairdressing is still out of their garage or something.
That's interesting.
Whereas I'm not sure that that's what we really want to do with those home occupations.
Right.
Anyway, it's a fun thing.
Well, part of the one, as we look at the notion of review and adjust our entire regulation is that we're really unorganized or out of the core, to be honest. One of the dilemmas is you're trying to figure out where others stand. Because there's no rule around what towns exactly can regulate. We can use our imagination. We find ourselves antagonizing over fairly small stuff that is at the far reaches of anybody's regulation. And when we're asked to justify regulations that we propose, we'd do well to say that they reflect the surrounding, that these are basic contemporary practices. Right now, it's a little bit of a stretch in some areas, but we're looking at that's what we're after. So it's not...there's more judgment involved in this process than you think. But now you're on the team, and you'll see.
And for three new members, I have printed up copies of the retract rights. You'll have to speed at that. And we do, we had binders to communicate with the commissions. You can see some of the areas that we were addressing over the summer. Kind of get up to speed.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, Kevin.
I move to adjourn.
Second one, all in favor? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.